All right.
Okay, we are now recorded.
Thank you, calling the meeting to order. Please note that at the present time, only Counselor Calhoun is absent, but hopefully she'll join in the next few minutes. We don't have a light agenda today. We haven't met in quite a bit, so it's great to see all your faces. And we'll go ahead and start off with committee, committee chair reports. I'm going to ask the employees make their reports. We'll have a Q and A section once all three reportees' reports are finalized, and then we'll move on to beautification. So, Ms. Yvette, would you like to go first?
No!
Oh, sorry, I forgot you were recording.
Oh, my goodness.
So, since we've been dealing with the COVID thing, we have been closed. We opened our building for folks to come in on June the 8th. During that time, we also started our minibus service again on a limited basis only in town. We have been very, very fortunate to work with social and new services and being able to get meats and fish from Food Share so that we can distribute that along with the other items that we have. We have been so fortunate to receive, actually from you, Councilman Wong, that you coordinated for us the Bloomfield stuff a truck in honor of the high school classes of 2020 and 2003. We received adult undergarments, diapers, paper goods, cleaning products, you know, so many things. We also received from Mayor Brown, DeMethan Brown, we've got a crate of fresh vegetables that we were able to split up and serve a few families. We have a host of religious organizations, Bloomfield Baptist Church, Bloomfield Congregational Church, Sacred Heart Church, that have also given us gift cards and a host of other things. Masks, we're having masks being made now by local folks in town who are making the fabric masks. And we probably have, we've probably given out maybe 150 masks and we now have 200. So, we just put in our newsletter, which will go out today that we have 200 masks. We're giving one fabric mask and two disposable masks to each individual. It's a Bloomfield resident 60 years of age or older. Let's see what else. We also received those little nose metal things for the, to put in the face mask from H R Hillary Company in, in Groton. They donated 2,000 of them, so everyone who's been making the mask, we were giving them the little metal piece so that it have a better fitting for your nose. Let's see, Stop &amp; Shop and Geisters have been very good to us, giving us discounts when we were buying toilet paper before we received donations and also donating some. We also are getting from Stop &amp; Shop little, I would call, we call them day brighteners, but there's basically a variety of pastries and breads. We give all the breads to social and new service to give away on their weekly food distributions. And we keep the sweet treats and send them out to seniors who are somehow connected to us either riding on the bus or doing volunteer work or taking classes. So, people have been very appreciative of sort of getting that phone call. We've been doing the wellness calls every week to everyone on our list. And most people have been very, very excited and kind of talking a really long time so that it makes it difficult sometimes to get the whole list done in a short period of time. Let's see, Food Share. Oh, we have requests, we've been responding to some of the requests from seniors who have run out of food because they haven't gone out. And we have packed up and delivered foods that have already been donated to us and, and many that we get from social and new services, they're very generous in sharing. We are now, as I said, starting to look at some of our activities. We're going to be doing a Zoom class. We're going, we're also working on collaboration with social and new services to do a pen pal thing, whether it be snail mail or email, depending on the abilities of the people interested. And we're also working with leisure services to do a paint night, which we will have outside and have all prepackaged foods that go with it. We usually, you know, have it, people can come up and get it. We can't do that now, so we're working together on that. And we're also looking at into September, should, should everything go well, to do a grandparents' day celebration, which, weather permitting, we would also do outside. I don't want to monopolize everything. I think that I've told you it's way too much stuff right now, I guess.
No, that's awesome. And I meant to, just a note here, Ms., our Councilman Calhoun has joined us, so we'll mark her present. And one thing I would like everyone to highlight in the reports are any COVID-related challenges, overall challenges and short-term goals. Sorry, I meant to say that beginning.
Okay, so the COVID-related challenges are, are just, we, we had in each vehicle installed a Plexiglas shield for the driver, for the driver's protection as well as the passengers, but it makes it difficult to get the passenger on the bus because you can't reach through or, you know, you have to keep running back and forth. They have a shield and a mask so that when you're bringing someone on with a wheelchair, you're literally, you can't be six feet apart from that individual. You've got to be right on top of them. And so, it's getting those things in and out, and the Plexiglas scratches easily. So, that's, you know, been an issue. We've also been asked to deliver to COVID homes, and so there was some stress about that, but we've worked it out that we leave it on the porch or in front of the garage so that there's no contact. What was it? So, that was some of the things, people wanting to sort of just come in and do everything together like we've always done, wanting to get hugs and all the things that have been part of the department. And we're not able to do that anymore, and there's sort of a bit of stress of people saying, "Well, why can't you hug me? Because I don't care. I've got my mask on." Well, we do care. That's why we have our mask on. And so, just a little bit of educating people and telling them again why it's so important to keep the mask on, to keep the, the social distancing and all of those kinds of things. So, the goal would ultimately be to get back to normal, whatever that is, whenever that is possible. We've been following closely with what the governor, the health district and the CDC have shared with us and about what we should and should not do. And we've been following those guidelines. And so, on July 20th, should the governor go ahead and open up further, we will then start doing things under a tent that we are now having installed on Monday. So, we will be able to do some outdoor events here. Did I answer all your questions or I missed something?
That was awesome and very thorough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We can, Ms. Camilla?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Social and new services has been very busy. And I'm going to start out with challenges with COVID, as Counselor Wong mentioned. I think the, the greatest challenge is working with clients. And a lot of our, the programs and services we provide, we have to apply we online or via manual applications. We have to collect documents and make photocopies so we can upload and send and really trying to navigate that with a lot of clients who either don't have access or it's a challenge to, to upload items. That has been very challenging. We're entering our renters rebate season. It started April 1st, but because of COVID, we had to move out the, the start date. We ended up having to mail applications to our seniors and disabled adults and really trying to coordinate with them how to fill out the applications because we, they're used to coming into our office or we go to all of the senior housing sites and we sit down and we do applications. And it's a great opportunity for us to touch base with them, to assess other needs. But trying to do things, you know, virtually is a challenge without having that one-on-one direct contact. It's, it's a challenge for staff and it's a challenge for the clients that we serve. So, we're trying to work through that and figure out the, the best way to, to meet the needs. Surprisingly enough, our, our population has adjusted because I think it's not just our department, but it's, it's everywhere where you're receiving services that you have to adjust and learn new ways to do things. So, that has been the greatest challenge, but we have all risen to the occasion and doing what we have to do. So, that's a good thing. Moving along, one of the programs that we are continuing to provide is the Energy Assistance Program. Surprisingly enough, the months of April and May were still pretty, pretty chilly. I know I had to turn my heat on. So, when we have families who have lost income because of COVID or whatever other reasons, we're getting a lot of phone calls requesting help for oil deliveries, which typically in April and May, we're not even dealing with those types of issues. So, through partnering with Operation Fuel, generous donations that have come in through the department, we really have been able to meet those needs. We've been helping people with water bills. We had one particular issue that came up where we had a senior who had no running water and no heat. He heats with oil. So, the, somehow the family found out we were helping out people and we were really able to work with Operation Fuel to get his services restored. So, those are challenges too, because as staff members, we typically have to do home visits and we really needed to go do a home visit in this particular situation because we needed to assess the senior and make sure he was safe. So, trying to do those types of things with COVID and our own anxieties, you know, with COVID and making sure we had enough PPE to protect ourselves, to protect those whose homes we are going into, that, that's a challenge too. We're grateful to Police Department, to BVA. They've been providing all three of our departments in the building and across town with a lot of PPE to, to help us meet those needs. Food, food, food. We've been doing a lot of distribution of food, as Yvette mentioned. We have been the fortunate recipients of the back, the Weekend Backpack Program that several of the churches partner with the schools in the Bloomfield community. When the schools shut down, the food was still coming in and it needed a way to get that to the people. So, both my department and senior services benefited from receiving those, those bags once a week. For my department, we probably distributed on average about 125 households a week. And that's with delivering, with distributing food two days out of the week. Last Friday was the last day that First Congregational Church delivered the bags to us. But we'll still continue on with the program as, you know, we have food that we're able to purchase from Food Share through a lot of donations so we can keep up with the need. What else is going on? United Way. United Way had a program where they collected monetary donations from across the state to help Alice households. And the town of Bloomfield, we benefited from receiving 20 gift cards in the amount of $200 each that we were able to give to families who are within the Alice household guidelines, but also have lost income or not able to meet their needs, their household needs because of COVID. I am also working with United Way to, to receive more of those Visa gift cards with some of the donations that we've received in our office. If I, you all know, if you've purchased any Visa gift cards, you have that fee of $5 or $6. And I don't want to have to pay that fee every time I purchase a Visa gift card for a family. So, we're working with United Way. The town of Windsor was able to successfully have a program through United Way, and we're trying to do the same. So, once that's up and running, we'll certainly let you all know. Surprisingly enough, we received maybe about five or six referrals during this time of families who needed to be relocated out of their home because of a variety of code violations. We currently still have three families in hotels, two of whom we've had in hotels for about three months. You know, and I don't want to get into relocation assistance. We can save that presentation for another day. But it is a state statute where individuals who have to be relocated because of building violations, and if the homeowner is unable to provide them with adequate housing, then towns are required to provide that service. Another situation where we have to go into people's homes and do assessments. We work really closely with the Health Department, Building Department, Fire Department to go out and do those assessments. Surprisingly enough, I had more than usual during COVID. And, you know, that, that again speaks to some of the challenges that, you know, we have to face in, in our department. And thank you also to Councilor Wong for coordinating the diaper drive and the household items drive. That was very useful. We're still distributing a lot of those items and we had plenty to split between our two departments. Let's, oh, we've worked with the Health Department on referrals of residents who were positive for COVID and they're unable to leave their home because of, to get food or what have you. So, we've partnered with senior services to deliver food to them. There were a couple of individuals we had to place into hotels because of the nature of their living situation, and they needed to quarantine and they were unable to do so in their homes. So, fortunately, we were able to assist them with that. Youth Services has been pretty busy as well. Some of you may know, we had, for the first year, we're starting up summer youth employment. We weren't sure what that was going to look like, how we were going to coordinate placing youth into the departments to work. But we are able to provide a part virtual experience, part work experience for 25 youth this summer. So, we are excited about that. That's still unfolding as we speak. We're still working with Capital Workforce Partners to figure out what that will look like. COVID, again, brings, brings about a lot of challenges and we're trying to work through that and provide the best work experience that we can for our youth. We have, I believe it's about 11 departments that we're going to be able to place the youth in. And we're really excited about that opportunity. Through our Youth Adult Council, Youth Services was able to put together some care packages to give to all of our high school graduates. We were able to purchase quite a few items, put them together in, in those backpacks with the strings on them. And when the schools distributed the tassels and the caps and gowns, we were there handing out bags of goodies to them to congratulate them. We not only did it for Bloomfield High School, but all Bloomfield graduates, regardless of the high school you attended, as long as you were a Bloomfield resident, you qualified. So, if you know of some youth who may not have known about it, tell them to give us a call because we just still have some bags in our office. And we coordinated that through Bloomfield Public Schools so we can try to reach out to those youth. Trying to think of what other things. We have a few programs coming up this summer. We have DJing 101. In our office, we have two professional DJs who wanted to share their knowledge and experience in DJing to bring up the next generation of DJs. So, we'll have a small event. You're welcome to join because I know you want to test those scratching skills. So, you are welcome to join us. So, we'll have a small group of kids, maybe somewhere around five. And the hope is, when we're able to start having social activities, these kids can DJ some of these activities. So, we already had a couple of kids who were really interested in it and we're looking forward to that getting started. Hopefully, we'll get a gardening program started up through our intergenerational program. We're working on getting some raised garden beds for the courtyard. Sharon, I don't know, you'll have to let us know what we can plant once those garden beds come in. But the hope is that some of those who participate in the program can benefit from getting some healthy foods and our food bank can benefit as well. And I guess that's really it. That's a summary. If you've got questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. So, did you, I think you touched on any COVID-related challenges, overall challenges and any short-term goals? I think the programs are really awesome.
Yeah, I think the short-term goals are really trying to figure out what the new normal is and how we can get back to providing all of the programs that we have while keeping everyone safe. If we can successfully do that, then we're doing pretty darn good.
Thank you. Thank you. Dave?
Thank you.
Then we'll go into Q and A for all three. You're on mute, Dave.
Thank you very much. It's the first time. To start off with some of the past events that we had, a lot of it being COVID-related for the challenges, pretty much everything that we do is challenges for COVID. I think that what's sitting on this, this call could say the same for it. I mean, our job and our, our function is to bring people together in a time where we're supposed to keep people separated. So, it has been a challenge for it. So, to start off the conversation, it was Memorial Day was a, was a new look for us this year. We weren't able to move forward with all of our ceremonies in town center, but we were able to put together a car parade with veterans, first responders for it. We had approximately 35 units in it, and it was throughout town. We had nothing but positive remarks and feedback. It took much longer than I anticipated. I thought it was going to be about an hour and 15-minute route and it ended up being about a two-hour, 10, two-hour and 15-minute route. But they came back smiling from ear to ear, which was really nice to see. So, we were able to, to at least move forward with some type of activity to, to honor our, our veterans and fallen heroes. Forward, addition for COVID-related challenges, we did move forward with shutting down the pool. So, there will be no pool at the, for the summer. We worked with the, the Health District on this. We received communication from the Department of Public Health. We wanted to make a decision early on, in early June, for numerous reasons, some for budgetary purposes, a lot of it had to do with staff-related issues as well. We needed to let the staff know what we were going to be doing for them, and it helped us with planning. So, that was the, really the physical distancing was the main issue that we had at that point in time for the decision to not open the pool. We felt as if we were not going to be able to keep kids off of each other and then that, that mandatory six-foot distance for it. So, we did that. And, and so, another challenge that we had was our summer camps. We received word early on that we could only have 30, 30 campers in the building. So, we needed to really look at our footprint of this, of the facility and figure out how many kids that we could accommodate based off of the standards that were being set by the Office of Early Childhood. At that point in time, there was no more than 10 kids per room. So, we were going with 10 kids per, maximum of 10 kids per room. We felt comfortable that we could accommodate up to 80 children in the center. So, we were able to apply for up, up to 80 children and we were granted that. They have since laxed, relaxed on some of those requirements and we're seeing that as part of this process. Every week, there's new orders, executive orders that are coming out, and it's in our favor for it. So, we start our camp program on Monday. Currently, we have 25 children between the two programs that we have to offer. It is definitely under what we anticipated. We were hope, we didn't think that we were going to get the 80. I mean, we were really hoping for, I mean, we were hoping for the 80, but we were thinking that we'd get close to 50 to 60 kids in there. There's probably some apprehension about sending their children at this point and the school's being shut down for it. We do have a few more kids registered for sessions two and three. The first week, like I said, has 25 kids between the two programs. It was there. We've been working with Facilities Department, most of the signs that you see, whether they're in Town Hall, in front of the town buildings or in our building, have either worked through our office. Matthew Mace has been the individual that is not the author, but the, the designer for a lot of them, most of them, a lot of them coming directly from the CDC website. But he's worked with facilities in order to get that accomplished. Like I said, the camp guidelines are, are very, very strict, going back to the camps. One of the things that we're doing, we don't want the parents and excess people into the building. So, we've, we've set aside curb side drop-off and pickup. So, we will have staff at two locations checking the kids in. Up until this week, we were supposed to do temperature reads on the children and make sure that they were 100, 100 degrees or 100.5 degrees or below. That is, that requirement has since been removed from the state, so we no longer need to do that. But for safety of everybody, we want to make sure that, the, limit the access into, into the building. So, we've been working, like I said, hand-in-hand with facilities in order to get the disinfectants that we need for it. The, the air dryers and the bathrooms have been shut off. At this point, we have spray bottles for disinfectant. We have to disinfect throughout the day, the thorough cleaning at the end of each day for it. So, as a result of that, we're trying to limit the access of programs into the building based on our camps for it. We will move forward, starting the first full week in July with some programming. Some of those programs include mad science workshops, a couple basketball programs in there. We have some, a virtual soccer camp. We have tennis lessons and shikito and jujitsu. So, we'll be offering some of those programs as well. We also worked with the Bloomfield West Hartford Health District. They were gracious enough. I believe that our mayor had a lot to do with this. Where we receive 100 thermometers and we have more if we need to, to go, to be able to hand out to our camp participants this year. So, every part, every camp participant's family will receive a thermometer for safety purposes. Special events, special events has been very difficult for us to plan. We, we have recently received orders from the state that we can have up to 500 people for, for outdoor events, but you have to maintain a 12-foot distance from blanket to blanket for it. So, we are planning on moving forward with summer concerts. We did originally cancel them. We, we, we told all of our vendors that we were, that we were shutting down for the time being. So, Matthew is in the process now of reaching out to the, the vendors to see what we can reschedule. For, we, I know that for certain that we were able to get our sound person on board for it and we know that we'll be able to get a few more. So, we're looking to start the summer concert series in mid, mid to the latter part of July and it'll go through the month of August. So, we'll still be able to do something. It will be at a new location. We could only fit 20, 22 of the physical distance and circles on the Town Hall lawn. So, if you had two to four people in there, that's really not given us enough people to provide for an event. So, we looked at alternative locations. A few years ago, we did an event at the, the green space between the pickleball courts on Rockwell Avenue and Blue Hills Fire Department. So, we had DPW look at that area and they can get up to 50 physical distance circles at that location. So, we thought that that would be a really nice place to, to have that. So, we had a meeting yesterday with the West, Bloomfield West Hartford Health District and the Police Department and DPW. So, that looks to be a go at that location. In addition to the concerts, we are also looking to do, we have, already had two dates secured for a movies on the lawn. We are looking to do one more. So, look for that, and look for that information to come out soon. They'll start in July and these, a few more, and probably one in July and two in August is what we're looking for. Because we really want daylight to, to come before the nine o'clock hour so it doesn't start too, too late in the evening for it. So, we're doing the best we can for it. It's been, it's been a struggle for it, but we're, we're doing what we can. We have had an uptick on our trail use for it. So, as a result, we had to put some, you know, please maintain your, your physical distance and signs on the East Coast Greenway. So, that's, that those have been erected about three to four weeks ago to this point. We also assisted with the high school graduation. Hopefully, everybody saw the sign boards with all the graduates' pictures and names on there. It's really cool that we were able... It's really cool that we were able to do that. It was the first time that we really that we explored with pictures. And it's awesome. As a result, we have the Teacher of the Year picture up there as well right now, and we will continue to do that. So we did try to work something out with the the middle school. They did, unfortunately, they could not provide us with the the type of photos that we needed and individual photos and names, so we weren't able to do it for the graduating class from eighth grade moving on up to the high school. Outdoor parks. Originally, we removed, we didn't put up tennis, and it will tennis, of course, weren't constructed at that point in time. But we didn't hang the nets for pickleball. We removed the rims for the basketball courts. We slowly introduced, two weeks ago, two nets on the pickleball courts. Now, new orders have come out from the state. So as a result, all four nets have recently been hung as of today at Rockwell Avenue for pickleball. The tennis courts have been completed over here at Three Thirty Park Avenue. So there's five tennis courts there, and they're also aligned for pickleball use as well. Wonderful to see. I leave the building, and I see people playing tennis. I haven't seen that in a long time. I see them playing pickleball. So that that is, it's it's a great timing for us, because these are the types of activities that we're seeing that are going to start to come back. There was definitely a lull in these racket sports, or specifically tennis, now so much pickleball. And I do believe it's one of the good things of COVID is that people are looking for something to do like this, and they're taking advantage of it. So those have been completed. The basketball courts over Pershing Park have also been completed as well. Still working on the Playscape at that location. So and then the basketball rims will be hung on July sixth. It's already been coordinated with the Department of Public Works, that they will go up on that morning, which is a Monday. So it's a week from Monday that they will be going up. I think that's, I'm sure I'm, oh, and we also have a couple webinars that are coming up in collaboration with the Land Trust. Next week, we have a reptiles and amphibians webinar, and the following week, we have a garden in for bees, butterflies, and pollinators. We did do a webinar a few weeks ago on ticks, and it was started off a little rough. We had issues with promoting the the presenters on the screen on there. It took us a good twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes in order to get things situated, but fortunately Scott Charlo to the to the rescue, and he was able to help us out. So it was a little stressful there for a little bit on that webinar, especially with all the people on there, but we felt comfortable moving forward. Things will be smooth sailing. And in addition to that, our publication, rather than mailing it out this year, we've been trying to send out some series of, a series of publications. I did just release another one today. Cool thing about releasing it electronically is we can update them. So for example, our last update for both the Seaberry Wildwood Trails and Wilcox Park, which we highlighted, because we really wanted to highlight some of the things that people could do in the trails for it. We didn't have any video links in there. There has since been a couple of video links that have been created for both of those locations, and so there's a link on that publication that people can click on, and they can see Jim Trail at the Seaberry Wildwood Trails and Council Golf over at the the Wilcox. I'm talking about that location. There's also one that's being put together for the East Coast Greenway. That's it for now.
Thank you, Dave. We can open it up for questions for those three reports. I did have a couple. Do we know how many Alice households there are?
I don't have that number, but I can reach out to our contact to see at United Way to see if he has those numbers for us, and I can get that to you.
Thank you. I know there's a pretty substantial percentage in Bloomville.
Yes, it is.
All that related into households.
Danielle, I can, I have that information for you.
Oh, great.
Um, we do, we did do an Alice challenge where we had some community stakeholders come in, and there's twenty thousand dollars from the United Way that we will have access to. So that challenge was going on for, Camilla, do you know how long, how many weeks we did that?
Maybe four or five, four maybe?
Yeah, and I think we had one, we had one more, we had one more meeting, and because of COVID, the meeting was canceled. So just to give some background, we talked about what we could do with that money to help to inform the Alice families of the programs that were available to them. So I think we have one more meeting, and then we get that twenty thousand dollars, but I can definitely provide that information because I do have it.
Awesome. But it's, so it's thirty, I think it's like thirty percent in Bloomville is Alice?
Yes, something like that, a little bit more than that.
Like thirty-four, I think you've said. Okay, wonderful. And in regard to the Summer Youth Employment Program, how many, do we know how many of the twenty-five youths are Bloomfield resident, or are they?
Oh, they're all, the requirement for us is that they all have to be Bloomfield residents. We received something like a hundred and seventy-five applications for twenty-five slots, which is great, because we were concerned about the word getting out there, because the advertisement didn't go out until the schools shut down. So we didn't have the schools open to get the word out, but somehow, some way, it did. I know Leisure Services did some blast for us. We did. So that's incredible. I wish we had a hundred and twenty-five slots for each of those kids, but we didn't. Yeah, so that's awesome.
And Dave, for the Rockwell hoops and nets, are those brand-new nets that are going to be installed at Rockwell?
They will be. They'll all be new for it. And in addition to that, now that we are in the process right now, I just received the approval to move forward with resurfacing of it. So I'm in the process of reschedule, of scheduling the resurfacing of the Rockwell Courts, since money was allocated for that as well. That date has yet to be determined yet.
My next question. It would be, it's going to be, I'm very encouraged and happy to hear that it's a green light to move the concerts on the other side of town or the east side of town. I think that that's awesome, and I'm hoping that maybe we can resurface the court before that. Those concerts presumed, just to make that area very, you know.
I would love to, I would love to say yes to that, but I, that's probably not going to happen. With the delay for moving forward with it, it's realistically, how we won't be until a September project for it.
Maybe Sharon can help spruce up the place before the concerts commence. Thank you. Ms. Counselor Calhoun has some questions.
Danielle, just, I'm sorry, really quickly, I have a number for you. Good old Google, I tell you, that's my best friend there. I have for Bloomfield households, it is thirty-four percent of the population, and they have a total of eight thousand four hundred and sixty-three households.
Eight, four, six, three households.
Yeah, and that was as of twenty eighteen.
Ooh, okay. Thank you for that. That's, you know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, I have a question for you. The new soccer field, the grass is getting pretty high on the street side. Is that the responsibility of the contractor, or is that the town's responsibility?
Well, I actually had this conversation today with our Department of Public Works. Regardless of whose responsibility it was, it was told to for DPW to make sure that they cut the grass for it. Dan has since gone out, and they will be cutting the grass. I would suspect that it'll be taken care of tomorrow. And we got Nancy in on it, because there was a question on whose responsibility it was. A portion of it is the town's, a portion of it is the contractors, but we're just going to take care of the entire portion for the time being.
Okay, and as you all know, I walk my little dog through the the center there. There's some debris that's in the back, in between the the fields and the the building, like when you walk down the path going towards the 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 tennis courts, there's some debris there, like cans and a water bottle that's been there for a couple months now. So I don't know if it was left by contractors that were working in the area. And that's a statement. But last question is, along with the grass, there's guards in the the down, the street, the downspout with where the grates are for the, so catch basins on the street, that's what it's called. Is that also a part of, do we know whose responsibility to get those protectors up out of the grate?
That would still be part, that would be start of, still part of the contract for the contractors. They're the ones that would install those. And they're still there until they, until they complete the project. The fields themselves have not been turned over. Until they're fully turned over, I would suspect that they stay there, because you see along the park outside, there's still a silt fence there. And according to state contract, they need to, that that's part of their responsibilities to keep those there until the full growing period is gone, to keep the silt out of it.
Okay, and I thought I was done, but I have one last question. Some of the shrubberies are still dead around the the building. Are those going to be replaced?
Need to talk to Nancy in the country, well, Nancy in particular for it. I do know that they had plans to replace some of them. I don't know what their full scope of work was doing at this point. I I don't, the building itself has not been turned over completely.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
So I don't know who owns it at this point. The landscapers typically own the plant-ins for a for a full year, but because of the holdup of the project, they may be responsible for longer, but it's it's something we would need to follow up on.
Right, because we don't want that year to go by, and we're
Correct. And Sharon and I were talking about it yesterday. We talked about the responsibility for for weed-in. You can see some of the seedlings are starting to pop within the the beds that we have outside. You're starting to see little maple trees that need to be picked up. You know, they need to be picked out of there. So that was also discussed with DPW this morning during my conference call with them. So he has some follow-up that he needs to do with Nancy for, so the the contractor and DPW can discuss some of those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions before we move on to beautification? Counselor Politis.
Yeah, first I'll start with a couple comments. Just want to thank you all for all the work you're doing through all this, all this COVID. I know it's not easy on anybody, but you guys are obviously on the front lines, dealing with the public and getting into places where a lot of people wouldn't want to go. So I just wanted, as for questions, it is, how how affected do we think that we're going to be from a food distribution, distribution situation now that the backpack program is kind of going dormant for a couple of months?
Fortunately, we have full access to purchase food through Food Share. And I've been trying to pay them, and they send back my checks. I send payment for what we purchase, and then the checks come back. So I don't know, we're going to write that one for as long as we can write it. And fortunately, Public Works, they have been awesome and amazing. When I call them and tell them I have a large load to go pick up, they come pick it up and and deliver it for us. So I think as long as COVID has the impact that it has in our communities, Food Share will partner with us to do what it is we need to do. So at this point, I'm not concerned. I don't know if Yvette has any concerns with those that she's feeding, but we we've been doing okay. The donations have been, right now, we're still doing just monetary and gift card donations. We may open up soon with receiving food donations, but we'll keep you posted on that.
So we've had
Go ahead.
So we've had a huge uptick in Food Share distributions and the food that we're delivering. We used to bring people here on a Tuesday mornings, and they would wait and sort of socialize, waiting for Food Share. Now, we don't, we're not able to bring them and have them sitting and waiting in the building, so we're delivering to them. Right now, we're delivering to sixty-two homes every other Tuesday, as well as a hundred and eighty-nine cars came through two weeks ago. So it's a huge number of people that have been coming through, and it's been kind of a tough road to keep every, all of that going. And because of Camilla's ability to get that food, whether she's paid for it, now who knows, but because she's able to get that food, we're able to share in it, and now, you know, we've been able to include meats and fish and poultry, and it's a wonderful thing. People have been very, very thankful.
Okay, good. And then just one question for Dave. Do you have, we have any sense of any increases in janitorial costs for the the disinfectant that we're going to be having to be doing at Three Thirty Park? Do you think it's going to be significant or hard to tell or?
I do not. We're, a lot of it is going to be done with staff, with spray. You spray before you leave and let it sit overnight with the disinfectant, and we're just using our regular scheduled custodial staff. He may bring in one of them on a part-time basis for it, but we are not, to my knowledge, we are not bringing in anybody from the outside. Or if Chris Greenlaw is planning that, he has not shared that with us, and we've had constant communication with them.
All right, just one last comment. Just blown away by that Alice household figure of eight thousand. It's amazing that we're only having a hundred and eighty people drive up. I'm surprised it's not a line around the block, so. Scary number. Thank you.
Looks like Counselor Curtin has a question.
I may have to promote him. Let me see.
Bring him on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question for this Yvette. How are you doing this evening? My question is regards to the seniors with the buses. Are those buses still making trips to pick seniors up, to take them to locations that they may want to go to? For instance, if they want to go grocery shopping, or whatever the case may be.
Yes. So we started on June eighth, and we've been transporting individuals, for instance, so because of of just social distancing, our thirty-passenger bus can only take seven passengers at a time. So we have to make a lot of trips to take this, you know, even a smaller number of people to the same locations. It is time-consuming, and it means that we have to limit the number of people we can transport. We're using our three largest vehicles, but that only gives us twenty spaces per hour that we can transport.
Wow. Oh, so wow. So here's a question. Obviously, would have to make in so many trips with gas and everything. Are that budgeted during the year in your budget? Because I couldn't remember whether or not I saw any expenses for for additional fuel for the year.
There was a time, there was a time that we were responsible for the repairs and maintenance and the fuel costs, but since when, let's see, at some point, they decided that they wanted to keep all mechanical costs, including fuel and repairs, in DPW's budget.
Got you.
So there, there may be an uptick, but it would not directly impact our budget, but thank you for asking.
Yeah, yeah. So no, I'm just trying to trace and see exactly where would that cost be, because I I couldn't remember whether or not anyone came in and said that, hey, that may be a additional expenditures, just because of the excessive driving back and forth, and you're talking about large vehicles being moved around. You're going to burn fuel, so no, that's good. And
We're only traveling in Bloomville also. We're not going out of town at all at this point. We've, anyone who has appointments, medical appointments out of town, will still have to use whatever method they were using prior to us opening back up. Just so that we can be sure to help everyone in town get to the places they need to go in town.
Got you. Thank you for that. Just my one comment, Madam Chair, before I go. Just to Counselor Politis, with the Alice number, the one thing that we have to be aware of, people are very prideful, and I know I've spoken to Camilla about this before. So even though you may not see an influx of folks, they're out there, and we have to find ways how to connect with those folks in a very humane way, where they don't feel, because folks feel that, hey, if I go to Leisure Service, or whatever the case is, and, you know, I'm going to be blasted all over that I'm coming for help and assistance, and people sometimes are very reluctant to do that. So hopefully, we can find different ways. So hopefully we can find different ways how to reach those families and make sure that we're assisting them. Because people do, you know, they're reluctant and they're prideful and they don't want to engage, but they're out there. Thank you.
And, and a lot of times people don't think they qualify for anything. You know, they may have applied one time for something many years ago and were denied for whatever reason. And that just squashed their hopes of applying for services again. So there are a lot of factors that contribute to people not, you know, receiving services. But you're right, Councilor Curtin, we have to do what we can to reach those people.
Thank you.
No, Councilor Curtin, we had, of the 62 people that we delivered to their homes, 42 of those individuals are, are new to us. So people have found out through the grapevine that we will bring food to them. So you don't have to be seen in a line, you don't have to be seen. And so it's sort of like an undercover delivery. So the bus comes up, the bus has been coming, but now the bus is delivering and, and it's more of a private, comfortable thing for them. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say for the seniors who were used to coming out and hanging out with their friends, are we doing anything to at least connect with them and let them know that on Zooms where they can connect with their friends? Are we doing anything like that?
So we are starting one Zoom program. We've had Zoom and Facebook Live programs, but I would have to be honest and tell you that the majority of the people are not participating in those activities because they either don't have the technology or they don't know how to utilize the technology. But we are seeing people coming out. So we used to have a lot of walkers here. Now we have walkers that are walking around the building. We, we, Dave gave us the little who did you to go out and figure out how many times they had to go around the building to make a mile. We also have an internal space for those that need to sit down as they're going around. Like I said, we're going to start doing the congregate meals again at the, towards the end of next month when the governor says that it's safe to start bringing people together again. So we are also erecting a tent or having a tent erected outside of the cafe so that we'll have a 20 by 30 tent for three months. That will allow for us to do outdoor activities and allow people to sort of come and just hang out together. Socially apart.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilor Wong, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing Dave and I forgot to bring up about the Back to School Fair.
Yes, we did.
So as you all, yeah, we'll be quick with it. But as you know, we have the annual Back to School Fair. Typically, I believe it's in the town council's contingency. I'm not sure, Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, where there's $8,000 set aside towards this event. We still would like to do something. Typically, we would purchase about 500 book bags and school supplies to distribute to kids. We don't know what school's going to look like, you know, come the fall, if they'll be using school supplies. But we do want to provide something, something to our kids when it's time to go back to school. So I guess the, the short of it is, don't give that money away because you're going to need it.
Schools are definitely a priority in the councils, for sure.
You're so direct, Camilla.
I'm not beating around the bush, get right to the point. So Dave, I don't know if there's anything, you know, better than what I said that you want to add.
In terms of the event, more information to come as more things start to become. I mean, the schools, the schools don't know what their days are going to look like yet. So we, we obviously can't decide when it's going to be. But, you know, during our conversation, recent conversation, we were thinking, you know, some time in September, preferably as late as October if we had to.
Hold that money.
All right. All right, we're going to take one more question. Deputy Mayor Mann has a question and then we'll move on to beautification reports because it is getting close to seven o'clock.
Okay, I believe I need to promote him as well.
Bring him on up.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, you just need to.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say every time I hear you women speaking about the things you do, it just makes me feel good because you're doing such important work and dangerous work. Under these conditions, I'm very proud of that, of the work you do. The, the, that's a comment, it's a good comment. Question I had was compared to last year where you had a good opportunity to see the building in full use. Would you say you're running at 50%, 30%? What, what do you, what kind of field do you have for that right now? Irrespective of what are the guidelines are, what are you experiencing? You have a feel?
So for us, we've had people coming since before we were open on June 8th, literally coming and knocking on the doors, calling us, saying outside, can you just come out and say hi? We have people who are still coming. We're, we're doing the contact tracing. So as people come to the building, we get their contact information, name, telephone number and/or address of the time they come in and the time they leave and the reason that they're there for. And a number of people are just coming to say hi. They just want to hang out. If they could just stay 10 or 15 minutes just to see someone. So I, I would say we are certainly really not, not even making the 50% mark. I mean, I, I think that at this point, we're probably like 25 or 30%. And that is really something that we're trying to keep down for now until we can get to the place where the governor and the CDC and the health districts say that we can bring in more people, which at this point, we're looking at Ju-, July 20th.
And, and are you controlling access for that reason?
The doors are locked at all times. We have someone stationed at the two front doors so that we can allow the person to come in. They installed a temporary doorbell which was working fine. Apparently it's now been overused and it only works intermittently. So when we hear someone tapping at the window, we know that someone's outside and we, we go to the door. So we are looking to, to get something that's more reliable because I don't want people, especially in the heat, to stand outside waiting for us. But that's been our story.
Well, thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, beautification.
Okay, thank you very much. So proud of all of you, so appreciative. It's quite impressive and it's wonderful that you're doing all these things. The beautification committee is a bit different. We haven't had to really worry about COVID-19. We've proceeded as if it didn't exist, except that we wear masks because we don't really come in contact with people. And my committee is a very hardworking committee that wants to do things that makes the town look beautiful so that people feel good, the residents who live here and the people who ride by. So we have been continuously working at this point. All of the town parks throughout the community have been planted. We've installed a lot of new perennial plants, sustainable pollinators that will attract bees and butterflies, which as Dave mentioned, there is a lecture coming up, a webinar that the BBC and the CEC are cosponsoring along with Leisure Services to hopefully get people interested in what they can do to their own gardens to attract pollinators. And with COVID-19, a lot of people have been outside. My discussions with garden centers and garden vendors is that this has been the biggest season they've ever had. They can't keep plants supplied. And you, I, I've been to some of these garden centers to check things out. There's lots of plants available and people are coming. And it's really a nice activity, which is really something that we're going to promote because we have the notable landscape awards each year. And we're hoping this will be a record year that people will want to do this or they'll want to nominate their neighbors or their friends. And the deadline for that is August 10th. And pretty soon, I'm still waiting for it to be done. It, it hasn't quite happened yet, but the town website will have all the information on people who can fill out the forms and, or can nominate people. In the past, we had also paper forms on the book rack in the center of Town Hall. And I'm not sure yet, people can really come into Town Hall without an appointment. So we'll just take that, you know, and see what happens. If, once the Town Hall does open again, we will put those out there. Our, if you've noticed, if you've had to go to Town Hall, all the hanging baskets have been hung, all the plants have been put out. We put some new things we planted in front of Town Hall, Town Hall. We planted in front of the police department. We put in 21 winter berry plants, which will produce red berries that we can use in holiday time. So we're trying to not only promote pollinator plants, but to use them so we don't have to go out and buy everything every time, bless you. And the other things that we're doing is in order for us to communicate with people, we're trying to get our community to be aware of what happens throughout the town as far as beautification. We have created an Instagram account. And we're hoping that you, as other committees, will encourage people to sign up for this Instagram account. It's not, it's free. And basically, we're showcasing all the gardens in the community that have been planted and what we're planting. And we're trying to make it somewhat instructional, but we're trying to show the people that are involved. And we're hoping to get more of the community to come out and be participants. My committee right now, I think there's seven of us. We oversee, each one of us has one of the town parks to oversee so that we coordinate with the DPW to let them know when plant, when gardens need to be weeded or if they haven't been watered or, you know, if anything is, is not going well. So we're there to do that. And, and one of the gardens we planted this year, despite that the swimming pool is closed, is the municipal pool because David asked us to do that. But I understand there will be other activities going on. So we didn't want the municipal pool to look like it wasn't kept up. So I think that, that, you know, is a good thing that when people see that, the response has been really good. What else? So, oh, I, if you have a pen, I just want to tell you that the Instagram account, if you want to go check it out, and it's just beginning, but it's the, and, okay, so it's BBC below the line dash, then BLMFLD, below the line dash CT. Okay, so that's the Instagram account.
Follow you right now.
Okay, good. We've got a new follower. I like it, another one. Yes, and Eva, one of my committee members, is sort of taking care of it. And she's already said, we've already gotten like seven new followers that, I don't even know if they're from Bloomfield. But that's another advantage of this is that we're showing outside communities what our community can do. And let me see what else. So I think that's, I mean, we've done a lot of things, but that, I think those are the highlights. We put in some new gardens this year. There was a garden near the bus stop. Excuse me, in near the bus stop on Bloomfield Avenue. We cleaned that up and we put in new shrubs there that will flower in the spring and have fall color in the fall. They're sustainable, they'll come back every year. And we've also, at Mary Hill, we put in new perennials. And you should check it out. It just looks gorgeous this year. Some of my committee donated some plants two years ago and those are all filling in. So it, 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 all the gardens as you go up Blue Hills Avenue are quite impressive because we have Mary Hill Fire Department, the Blue Hills Branch Library and the corner of Cottage Grove. And there's one other one, I can't remember, somebody, I forget what it was, but there is another one. And all of those are all looking great. They've been maintained. They're part of the, the public town parks that we take care of. And so we're very proud to see what's happening and that we've planted all these pollinators too. Let me just check and see if there's anything else that I wanted to tell you.
Can I just say something?
That's it, yes.
I wanted to thank Sharon. She was out in the heat yesterday replanting the pots that she had already done. We sort of came back over a weekend and during the COVID time, she had flowers out there and plants looking really great. And then she came back yesterday. I was like, what are you doing here in all the heat? And she goes, oh, it's fine, it's a breeze. It was a hot breeze, but. It was a hot breeze, but there's floods changing all the plants around. So I thank you so much. It really, really adds to the cheeriness when you come to the building. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we did, we put in the, I, one person cleaned up the planters on the committee and then I came in and did that. There are five of them. And I want to thank the Yvette and Dave because they have people who come from each of those areas and water them. So it's been a partnership that seems to really work. So thank you also. And that completes my report for now.
Thank you, Sharon. Are there any questions for Sharon? I have a question and comment. I know, I know I sound like a broken record, but I know Sharon, in the past, we've talked about kind of giving Rockwell and that area some like refreshed curb appeal. Maybe we can take a field trip out there, you, Dave and I, and see what's feasible in this season. I know it's hot.
No one's ever talked to me about Rockwell. I.
No, no, no one's talked to me about that before, but I can go look at it. I, you know, I can't promise you anything, but certainly can go and look at it.
Who looks over Persian Park? Who, you said you had seven members? Who's the?
Yes, we don't, Persian Park is not one of our town public spaces that we maintain. If you want to know the places that we maintain, you can look on the town website. We only, we do not handle any of the local parks. We only handle the town public spaces. The smaller parks, we don't, we don't, that's not our responsibility.
Is it because of how the charter is written or how the beautification, what do you, who determines that?
When I took over the committee, these were the places that were designated that I was responsible for maintaining, for, you know, planting and maintaining. I don't know.
Okay.
I'd have to check it out for you to see.
Yeah, because you had seven people that oversee a particular park. So when you said park, I thought.
Well, there are the town spaces like Town Green, Town, the Town Hall itself, all sides of it, the Police Department, 330 Park, the two electronic signs. We have planters at the Police Department and at 330 Park, the library, the two libraries. So those, and Mary Hill Green and, yeah. Yeah, and that's what was in our budget. And our budget was cut in half this year. So that was basically, you know, what we could handle.
Oh, I thought. Okay. Well, well, since not under the over, the scope of beautification, Dave, maybe you and I can go out there and we'll see what we can do for Rockwell. Maybe we can do a field trip to Rockwell, since there are going to be concerts on the green. So let's coordinate that with the whole, with some folks that are interested in going out there. Yeah, I think that maybe we should talk about what we can do from a park standpoint. Even, I know Lisa Lane, they were lacking some attention. I know DP, we had to poke DPW. The mayor had to poke DPW to go out there and mow some of that grass, but it would be cute to have maybe flower beds around those signs, you know, like the, the park sign. So maybe we can talk about expanding that and.
Could I say something about that?
Really, one second, and just really kind of incorporate environmental justice and things that we do from a planning standpoint. I think we can look at other places. And this is not, this, this is my point of view. We can certainly have a larger discussion on where to kind of distribute the resources from an environmental park justice standpoint.
Okay. And.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, in respect to Lisa Lane, I don't think it's an issue of environmental justice. This was one area, the sign, which was never there before. It was only put up last year and really nobody was aware of it, that it needed to be taken care of. So I don't think it was something purposely not taken care of because we've made, for all the areas that, you know, I've known about, we've made a point of making sure they're all kept. So that, I think, was inadvertently done. It wasn't, you know, one side of town neglected for another side of town. It just was that that sign didn't have the grass cut. And that was cut immediately the next day. Dave called the DPW and they went out and cut it the next day.
Yeah, I think that's a bigger DPW issue where we need to, they need to, that needs to be on a regular cadence, but that's another topic for a different committee. Thank you. Any more questions for beautification? Oh, we have Councilor Curtin? Oh, we have Counselor Curtin. Do you have a comment there?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a thanks to the Beautification Committee for everything that they do. I have a couple of questions. The one is regards to the, what was that Instagram page? I'm a little lary with that because the beautification is a committee of the town. And I believe that we need to be consistent where we're using the town's platform. I don't know through the town website, but I think it's, we have to be careful then. What's the next committee that's going to create their own little platform? And I think once you create a platform representing the town, that opens you up to who knows what. I mean, with with technology today and social media and platform, you never know what could go out there. So I think that's something that should have been brought forth before jumping the gun at that because I I don't think that we want, I mean, if this was an independent like Facebook page or something, but it is the town. You are showcasing the town. So I think that's something that we may want to consider using a platform where everyone
Okay, that sounds reasonable. I will approach the town manager and ask him about it.
Yeah, just I I think from that standpoint, the C E C and various committees that do good work like what you guys are doing, I think should use a platform where everyone is using, where everyone can go to the town website and you can showcase what's going on instead of everyone coming up with their own platform. And that's my comment. And I think I think, Madam Chair, you covered a question I had to do with with that Rockwell area. Because I think when we all went out there, what was it, last year? We were part of that whole initiative to clean up that area. I think that should have been put on the agenda to to get some stuff out. So so hopefully we can get that going because I think we need to spread the love across the board. Because I know even the bike path, we did did some planting on that bike path, if I'm not mistaken, or we're in the the verge of doing it. So I think that's good. We need to just come up with a plan to do that.
Well, that's great. We're going to go on a field trip. Yay, field trip. Any more question? Oh, sorry. Any more questions for beautification before we move on to our last discussion point for the agenda? Thank you. So last discussion point, community gardens. So I've been getting a lot of comments or, you know, do we have community gardens? You know, can we do a community garden? And I know we have some. I think Dave, you're the best subject matter expert to fill us in on how the, how many gardens do we have? How do they work? How do we get access to them? You know, what's free, what's not? And I'm excited to hear that there's going to be some garden beds outside of the facility. So, you know, I don't know if we can, in court, we don't want to make new initiatives, but we want to kind of make sure everyone has access to some of these things.
Okay.
Go for it.
Try not to be too long with the full history of it. But just to answer some of the questions, we have thirteen garden beds at Lisa Lane and we have seventeen garden beds at La Salle. We used to have just one set of community gardens over at Reservoir Three on Thomas Avenue. It was not the ideal location for community gardens because there was no water on site. So gardeners at that location either needed to bring in their own water from their residence, or they needed to take the trek over down to the reservoir itself with buckets and haul it over there. And that was on for, I don't, I don't know, I don't have the full history when it started, probably sometime back in the late seventies or even eighties for that matter. And that carried on until about five or six years ago. So as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, local agriculture was identified as part of that plan. One of the areas that was a highly concentrated area or highly discussed area was on the east side of town because there was already agriculture on the west side of town. So at that point, the Lisa Lane property, which is approximately ten acres, was up for sale. And then working with some some members was actually predated my involvement with the project. It was more so with the former town planner, Tom Hooper, and some local residents, Lois Hager, Vicky Reske, as well as others were heavily involved. They wrote a grant through and and applied for funding through the state of Connecticut. Lois Hager was was key on there as I believe that she was a commissioner or deputy commissioner at one point in one of her positions. So she helped out with it. Vicky helped out with it. So we also received funding from N R C S, which is the basically the Department of Ag, the government level, to obtain that property. So that's why we have the the farmer there, but that's, Community Gardens was also part of that initiative. So then that's when I came on board as part of the Phase One project for the for the farmer at that location. We identified that there was no water at the Lisa Lane Gardens. So we wrote into that grant a for water to be on site. Originally, it was supposed to be N D C water, but it was the far greater cost than what we could afford. So we ended up drilling a well on property. And so we were able to fully irrigate the farmer's land as well as the community gardens at that location. At that point, it was cheap budget. So they they tried an experimental ground level plots with using hay around there to frame them. It worked, but over time, any time you're going to use that type of material, it's going to decompose over the years. So we've, within the last two years, we actually applied for funding, additional funding through the Department of Environmental Protection for Community Garden Grant, and we received up to thirty-five thousand dollars of reimbursement to construct garden beds down there. So that's why you now see new garden beds at that location. There's also a walking trail that's on site there. It's a, it's a mix of residents, majority of the of the gardeners at that location are from the east side of town.
Talking about Lisa.
Lisa Lane, that's correct. And it's really, it's developed community. And it's it's community gardens. It's 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 true. It's, you know, we have Henry Bell, who's actually one of the he visits the senior center on a regular basis, comes down and shoots pool. He's one of the helpful stewards of of the area. He helps mow the grass around there. He helps he helped construct some of the beds down there. They help turn it over, turn the soil over. So they have a garden party every year. They come, last year, they came into the center to have it. They share their fruits and vegetables with one another. It's it's a really cool thing that they do. We do have it now that once you own the plot, you continue, you have first rights at that plot going into the following year. So if they don't re re up by April first, then they'll garden, the community gardens open up to anybody. This one, we don't have anybody on the waiting list. They have to June fifteenth to plant their gardens. If they don't plant their gardens at that point in time, then we reach out and we try and find additional gardeners. Once again, being the community side of it, we have a young lady named Ola Pollard that has been there since she was one of our original gardeners. I don't know if anyone on the call remembers Ashley Stewart. She was a former part-time environmental planner for through Jose's Department through planning. Her and Ola got together. They shared a bed last year. So the Boy Scouts typically have two garden beds down there. Due to COVID nineteen, they did not want to continue with gardening this year. So Ashley was able to recruit and get some additional gardeners at that location. So all all thirteen plots are now taking, taking care of there. Switching gears over to the to the La Salle property, same thing, we applied for state funding for there. So the majority of the funding came from the state. There was some that, there was dollars that were provided from from the town for the construction of it, being a historical site. We wanted to stay within that historical site. I don't know if any, if you're familiar with the the history of the property, but La Salle Farms, it was the La Salle, I believe it was ministry that that resided on a property. There was a former barn that burned down. And where the basement is, is where the in the foundation is where the community gardens were were constructed. So there's tool shed, tool shed, excuse me, tool shed at both locations. We supply well water at both locations, which is vital for the success of it. So right now we have thirty gardeners, or actually more than that, we have thirty plots filled between the the two locations for it. So it is a highly successful program. We'd love to expand at some point in time for it. There has been discussions and we we talked here with between myself, Camilla, and Ebed, the garden beds will actually go into the into the courtyard area for it. I'd love to expand it even more. But it does, there is a cost. It's associated with them. The La Salle property, for everything was said and done, was about an eighty-five thousand dollar project. Like I said, the Lisa Lane project was about a thirty-five. And that was the difference between the two locations is we were trying to keep the historical side of it at La Salle. And we also did a environmental review team came to La Salle several years back. Soil is is great at that location. So we wanted to keep the soil from La Salle to stay there. So there was a cost that was associated in terms of bringing it, repurposing it from one area from the park to the other. We're fortunate to have Vicky Reske, who's unable to join us this evening because she's currently away. She's not a master gardener. She's a landscape architect, but this is her passion. She oversees both of both of them for us. She is say, can't think the term other than brainchild behind it. She puts, she volunteers all of her time at both locations. And so we work hand in hand with her. We try to practice organic gardening at both locations for it. We have compost bins at the locations. We really pride ourselves on sustainability. We try to keep it as affordable as possible. They're fifteen dollars per plot. Part of the reason why it's fifteen dollars for residents and thirty dollars for non-residents.
For
One non-resident for both locations.
For the season?
For the season, for the year. And we do have to charge, we do have to allow non-residents since there is state funding that was that was in order to build to build it. So we do. And we only had, at this point, we have one non-resident on record, and she's been there since the beginning over at Lisa Lane. For it. So full transparency there. Yeah, and it's it's a great program.
Great.
It's one of my
That's awesome.
More happy success.
Yeah, so it sounds like this is completely affordable. There is a space, there are resources, and it looks like resources should be focused on when we do have the capacity to look into expanding options and not creating something brand new. Okay, this is very, that was extremely helpful.
Excuse me for one moment. I just want to close my office door.
Yeah, go. Any questions on the community garden topic? I, you know, I just kind of put it on the agenda because I had some questions with this group. Because again, some folks from the community were asking, so I I think I have more information to communicate to those folks. Yep, Sharon, you have a question?
Oh, yes, Dave. Is there room for additional gardens at Lisa Lane?
No, I would say no. It's a very wet area as it is. We were able to build up the property with this last grant that was part of it. There's a walking trail that goes around it. When you get, when you receive outside funding from from D E P, you need to have public access. There's a trail that goes through it. And the remaining portion of the property is managed by N R C S, who mandates that the farmer farms the rest of the property down there. So Lisa Lane, I don't think that we really have much room to expand at that location. One of the places that I would like to expand would be on the grounds that I'm sitting on now, somewhere in the the Three Thirty Park Avenue area. It would be cool. We have a bunch, we have a bunch of ideas and things that we could do and things that we would love to do for it. But there's a, there's a cost that's associated with all of it. You know, having a greenhouse would be great to have. You know, there are a lot of communities that who are working with the senior population where they may have flowers and they they do flower, they do Mother's Day sales with it to raise some funding in order to keep it up. It it's really, it's 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 the number one leisure activity to do is gardening.
And do you ever do any work with the Boag School? Because I know they have a greenhouse. I don't know if it's used or not, but do they ever work with?
We tried to do, to to work with them. Our issue is, is our our season is dominated during the summer months and the Boag is obviously off during the summer months. So there has been a problem. There has been outreach. That's there. So Janice Edwards and I'm drawing a blank on the gentleman's name that's over there. But we have numerous conversations, tried to get together a a work program with them. Tried to figure out a way to pay them. We just don't have the the funding in order to do so.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Counselor Cullen?
Thank you. I just want to say, Dave and the rest of the team over at Three Thirty Park Avenue, you all do a phenomenal job. It's just great work, great, great work. And and it it's just amazing to hear that through this COVID season that we're in that the gardening continues. I understand, yes, it's an outdoor activity. But and we're dealing with, you know, the seniors, but they still want it to be involved during, you know, this COVID situation. So this this, we have a lot of great things going on here in Bloomfield. So kudos, kudos.
Thank you.
All right. It is almost seven thirty. I am, any more questions before we wrap it up? Any more comments from counselors? We have a question from Counselor Curtin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to check in with with Kamala to see how's the food bank and funding, how's that going?
Yeah, I mentioned earlier, I think I've told you, you stopped by a couple of weeks ago that
Couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, and you saw the food bank. We had food that we just received from Food Share. Partnering with Food Share and First Congregational Church has been great. We have the ability to purchase, well, to get food at Food Share. I try to write checks and they send them back. So we're doing pretty okay. I try to pay the bills. They don't want our money.
You guys, you guys should be the model for the state when it comes to how you guys do it. Ebed, and I mean, the seniors, I know now because of, I have a friend of mine who's a senior. She is locked away. She used to get it out the house. And I mean, the governor is still telling seniors to stay home. So even though the town, the state has been opened up at least phase two, you know, seniors are still locked away and they can't get out and, you know, hang out with their friends. So, I mean, just appreciate everything you guys are doing and, you know, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, I did all that. Any more questions? Nope, no more questions. Any more last comments? All right, that's all we had. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a great night. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
Good, everyone.
Bye.